Good evening, councilmen. The problem I have with Camp Hutchins is, from what I can see, the budget at Hutchins Street Square is way in the red. And I just don't understand. Lodi Health now has -- they're just not like a nonprofit that's struggling to make it. They've got plenty of money and resources to -- if you go over to Lodi West, you can see their big facility over there. They have enough room over there to kind of use all those rooms in that health area. But they've got little rooms there that probably nobody uses with different kinds of equipment. But they've got plenty of room over there to create some space for themselves. And, you know, how many vacant buildings we got in Lodi that they could lease? So why do they need a special bargain from city council to run their programs? I just -- I don't think that's right. You should -- the other nonprofits here in town should get the same opportunity to start renting some of those on a yearly lease. And it's -- not only that, but do they pay for the Lodi Lake facilities during the summertime when they have all those children out there on the beach that require lifeguard? Do they pay admissions and vehicle fees like everyone else has to? That has to be taken into consideration also. And I'm just wondering how many parents are involved? I thought I read in the paper 40. And I'm wondering what the income levels are. And I understand that they're pretty high compared to what maybe 75% of the Lodians make. So why would they need low-cost childcare? Just 40 people, and how are they selected? I see some people have children year after year that go there, and then they also get to stay in the program for, what, two or three years? And I don't think that's right either. Everyone should be afforded an equal opportunity. This is Lodi, you know? It's like there's a Berlin Wall over here on the east side, and nobody bothers to communicate with the eastsiders over there. You've got the three quorum votes right there that seem to make sure of that all the time. That's my big disclaimer. So I'm just wondering why the other nonprofits don't get the same opportunity to rent some cheap space like the rich hospital does? You don't answer any of my emails.
Thank you, Mr. Cheney.
I constantly hear you say that people call you all the time, but I'd like to know who it is that calls. Because there's never any references. I'd like to see your information on your laptops that is public information. So maybe we need to use the paperwork to get the information. And we need to get something going. This city is not a city. It's a little town that just doesn't recognize a certain part of the population that's got to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cheney. Ms. Nelson.
I just wanted, for clarification, to say that we are going to be requiring the hospital to pay $2,250 per month plus an additional $550 in utilities. So you think $3,000 a month is too low?
$550 in utilities is definitely too low. Have you seen some people's air conditioning bill that's that much for just four people during the summer?
Fair enough.
Water?
Thank you.
Garbage. Do you owe me a pay our own garbage bill?
Yep, they're paying their own garbage bill, yep.
Cheney made me comment on this. I've been through this the last month or so. Camp Hutchins, or last -- correct me, city manager. They were paying us $1 a year. And we did it because when the Camp Hutchins was created, the purpose of this was to help have that childcare and foster care. Over the past year, they paid only $1 a year. City council members asked the staff, said, "Just look at that." And that's when we looked at it. We had meetings and meetings, and I see Susan Lynn is here too. We had town hall meetings, she had town hall meetings. And we went to this hospital and said, "You know what? We have this 2,000 square feet space. We are asking you to pay some rent, pay for the garbage, electricity, and would you consider this?" And Lodi Health came here and said, "Yes, we should have considered it." They went to the board, and Mr. Hood and the hospital were supposed to talk together, about to negotiate. The hospital said, "You know what? If it's $1, if it's more than $1, we don't want to do it." And that's when Susan Lynn and the parents got together, and they came to us and said, "You know what? That's not our program. That's the Lodi Hospital's program. All we just have is space." Ms. Lynn got the parents together and we spoke to Mr. Harrington. And Mr. Harrington came back and said, "You know what? We changed our mind. We'd like to offer you this certain -- we'll pay for electricity, garbage, and we even pay for the rent." So that's why they came, got that proposal, discussed the position, and that's where it stands right now. I hope that explains you that we had the space, which we hadn't been charged in the last many years. Now they're going to pay us 20 -- what is the total amount, Mr. -- $43,000 a year. Yes, if you come in to the city and say, "You know what? I want that space, and I'm going to pay you this much," you know what we're going to be doing? We look at you and say, "You know, we have the space available in my right, Mr. City Manager." That's what we said. We have a space there, and if you want to come to the Hutchinson Square and you want to bring the program here and pay fair market value, we're going to be here. Ms. Lynn.
The Camp Hutchins is almost in the red. That doesn't sound right. If you were bringing them, that would be a different story now.
We can talk about that later. I'll tell you the books. Ms. Lynn.
Thank you, council members, for allowing me to speak briefly. I wasn't prepared to speak on behalf of Camp Hutchins this evening, but I just wanted to clarify a few items that you had brought up. First, Camp Hutchins or Lodi Health is not responsible for whatever program is run in the summer months over at the lake. That has nothing to do with Lodi Health. Also, when this did come about, we did receive a letter that said they were closing. Many of the students there, the ages of two to five, are on family referral assistance, which means they are not rich children by any means. There are a lot of single parents that also go there. I am not one of them. I will share that with you. My child only attends part-time, but they have opportunities there that they do not have anywhere else in the city. And it's why I chose that for my child. The hours of operation are much more lenient than anywhere else in town. Also, it's non-faith-based, which we did not have an opportunity to have. And I cannot speak on the behalf of Lodi Health, but I can share with you that as far as I understand, there is no room for a childcare facility where you had suggested on the west, on Lodi West. Also, in order to stay at Camp Hutchins, the facility itself is in an ideal location. There's a park there. In order for us to stay there, it has allowed the area, including the community, to have less riffra than before. There's Crime Stoppers there, what I consider Crime Stoppers, all the employees of Lodi Health that run Camp Hutchins from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And it's really been able, at least in my opinion, kept a lot of issues as far as crime down in that neighborhood. And maybe some other neighbors could attest to that. I don't know, but that's what they've shared with me. So I just want to clarify a few things that were brought up. And I'm sorry I can't address a lot of your issues as far as the city management and how they take care of their budget, but we did have a big support as far as paying rent. We never wanted the dollar lease. We were more than happy to pay our fair share for our children. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'll bring it back to city council.
Would we approve C-14, 15?
Thank you so much. Francisco Trujillo, with Community Partnership for Families, respected city council members, Lodi city mayor, and city manager. I'm wearing three different hats today. As a city director for the Lodi Family Resource Center and their Community Partnership for Families, as a community leader in Lodi, and a member of the local organizing committee. We are speaking on behalf and representing other concerned Lodi community residents. The concern we would like to address is the allocation of CDPG funding. Part of my work with Community Partnership for Families is to guide underprivileged families in Lodi to become self-sufficient and to connect families to services providers to overcome challenges they're facing in their lives, but most importantly, to empower families. As a director, it is extremely difficult to encounter a high number of needy families in Lodi: Caucasian, Hispanics, South Asian, couples with children, single parents with children, separated families, poor working families, whose basic needs like food, shelter, utilities have not been met. And those challenges may lead to fragmented families in Lodi. Families with mental health issues, in extreme but realistic cases, children and families living in inhuman situations and conditions. I have conducted a research, and my research indicates that the allocation of funding is primarily directed to support a spade and neuter program and graffiti abatement. I have nothing against cats and dogs, for the record. And very scarce resources to support economic disadvantaged Lodi residents. However, the vast majority of families I have interviewed strongly believe that families can afford any animals or graffiti programs. This evening, I'm respectfully talking to the city council members, mayor, and city manager, and we are lobbying to allocate future CDPG funding to support economic disadvantaged families in Lodi, and more importantly, to get families involving east of Lodi as stakeholders in a multi-language process in the decision of city of Lodi future funding allocation. Thank you so much for your time, and have a blessed evening.
Thank you. Maria Rosas. Maria?
Good afternoon. My name is Monica Colo. I live on 441 and 1/2 Florida Street, and I'm just here to translate. Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Respetado consejero y mayor de Lodi.
Respected council members and city mayor.
Mi nombre es María Rosas. Mi dirección es en la Oak Street de Lodi, California.
My name is María Rosas, and my address is East Oak Street, here in Lodi.
El motivo de mi presencia el día de hoy en esta reunión.
The reason why I'm here this day.
Es porque hay muchas inquietudes que tengo sobre los fondos que se dan en la ciudad de Lodi.
It's because I have a lot of issues. It's because I have a lot of issues regarding the funding of city.
Yo soy parte del comité organizador de Lodi.
I am part of the community organizing committee.
Como soy ciudadana de Lodi, estoy preocupada por la forma en cómo se distribuyen los fondos de la ciudad.
And since I am a resident of Lodi, I'm worried about the way civic funds are being distributed.
A mí lo personal y a mi familia nos afecta la forma en cómo se distribuyen los fondos en la ciudad.
Me personally and my family are affected on the way civic funds are being distributed.
Pues como todo trabajo en el cuadro se recultó, y su trabajo es temporal.
Since my husband works, he's a farm worker, and his job is only seasonal.
De marzo a noviembre.
It's only from March to November.
Y por falta de trabajo por los meses restantes cuando no hay trabajo.
And because there is lack of work on the rest of the months.
And entonces para mi familia nos afectan igual que muchas familias. Nos es difícil esos meses.
Therefore, for us, like other families, it is very hard during those months.
Porque no contamos con lo suficiente dinero para solventar todos los gastos básicos.
Because we don't have enough money to cover our basic needs.
Los gastos de la familia, y por la misma razón, no podemos asistir a un chequeo médico.
Our basic expenses, and for that same reason, we're unable to go to medical checkups.
Y a mi familia nos afecta igual. Les afecta de igual manera a muchas más familias.
And the same way this affects my family, it affects all other families.
Por esa razón es que les pedimos nos den fondos para las familias.
For this reason, we ask you to give funds for families.
Y con fondos, fondos para la familia podemos tener asistencia de comida y médica al igual para tener ayuda para solventar todas las necesidades básicas.
And with funds, families will have assistance buying food and medical assistance, and will be able to solve basic needs.
Y pues nosotros como pagadores de impuestos nos sentimos con derechos.
And as taxpayers, we feel with rights.
De pedir fondos para asistencia para las familias.
To ask for funds to benefit families.
Para solventar todas nuestras necesidades.
And to help cover basic needs.
Our recommendation is to get some funds for basic family needs. Y que las familias sean prioridad sobre otros programas.
And that families become a priority over other programs.
Porque para nosotros una prioridad son las familias.
Because for us, the priority is family.
Con todo el respeto que ustedes se merecen, les doy gracias por tu atención y el tiempo que nos han dedicado.
With all the respect all of you deserve, I thank you for your attention and your time.
Very thank you. We have about four cards, half the cards probably have. Mr. Hanson.
Yeah, if you could interpret, I want to just clarify a couple of things. Okay. The two items that have been, or the two issues that have been raised is the money for graffiti abatement and the money for the spade and neuter program. I doubt I'm going to say anything to convince you about the spade and neuter program, but you know, it's one of those social issues that we're trying to keep a handle on because it gets out of control in terms of the number of animals. That's number one. Number two, the graffiti abatement. I would submit that that is a program that helps, you know, families perhaps be a little safer because of the gang violence mentality. When they see an opposing gang member, and Francisco, you know this, you know, there's going to be retaliation. We're constantly dealing with stabbings and shootings and a lot of, the whole mindset of gangs, you know, and this is a program that tries to keep the lid on in terms of spraying the graffiti everywhere. This is my claim on my territory, and then someone steps over that territory, and there's violence. And we've had innocent people killed in those violent situations. So that's what we're trying to deal with here, you know, in terms of gang violence. The other thing is, I think this council is doing what we can with the amount of money in terms of the food distribution programs. We recognize needy families. We recognize people are truly going hungry. You're going to have to summarize this for me, you know? And so we have, you know, allocated some funds, you know, into that program that helps to address that. I wish we could do more, all right? And fair housing. And the windows program is going to help people that are in substandard housing get some window replacement and be able to have better control of their heating, you know, and air conditioning costs. So my point is, I recognize you would like to see more done, but there is maybe more done than people are recognizing, and I just wanted to clarify that. And if you could just later summarize that for me, I'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
And if I may too. We also have the, oh, I'm sorry.
Johnson.
Mr. Wood, the points that Mr. Trujillo raised are interesting and certainly significantly valid. Would there have been the opportunity for his organization to apply? Did they apply? Would it fit in the parameters that were bound by the regulations from on high?
Yes, they would have been able to apply. They did not submit an application this year. They did last year for, again, the same type of family services type of activity, but this year, no.
Have they, was last year's activity a one-shot deal, or have they been on the list on and off over the past several years? I can't recall.
I think last year was the first time that they had placed a public service request like this. In the past years previous, it was for project-based, more of the Family Resource Center activity at the Lakewood Park.
Thank you.
Nelson.
I just want to make sure, and I'm pretty confident, that at the center, you're able to refer people to the Salvation Army so that they can apply for the low-cost medical and things that are available for, at the electric company for people who have issues. You know, I'm not sure if community grant funding is the right avenue for helping people pay their medical costs, but I certainly agree with that the city's doing a great deal to help mitigate some of the costs of the electric, and they do that through the Salvation Army. And as well as, I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Hanson in that, and I think you could agree, that gang and crime and violence affects families on the east side almost equally as housing issues and medical care issues. And the council can only do so much with the amount of money that we have, but I'm delighted to hear what you have to say.
Yes, I like to say that the reason why we didn't apply for CDPG funding is because there's nothing to apply for in reality, because the funding has already been allocated. When, we have $89,000, and $45,000 for the last two years has been allocated for the graffiti abatement program, and $25,000 for the spade and neuter program, and $18,000 for the furniture. That leaves us with $1,000 for the nonprofit organizations to apply for. So then it's really difficult to get any funding there. We do refer families to the different organization in town, but as you know, resources are very limited. And that's the reason why we're asking, we're lobbying to consider allocating more funding to support families' basic needs. This is what we're asking for. And these are Lodi residents, these are citizens of this country, and I know you understand our pain, and that's what we're hoping for, where we can sit down and be, taking families as being stakeholders in the decision about funding allocation. That's all we are asking for. Thank you so much.
Maria Luisa Ruquino. Maria Luisa.
Buenas noches.
Good night. Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Maria Luisa Ruquino.
My name is Maria Luisa Ruquino.
Vivo en el 12 Maple Street.
I live on 212 Maple Street.
Aquí en la ciudad de Lodi.
Here in the city of Lodi.
Gracias por escucharnos.
And thank you for listening to us.
A todos los mayores, a todos nuestros alcaldes.
Thank you, council members and mayor.
Por dejarnos venir a este lugar.
For letting us come here.
Y que se involucre más con nosotros en la comunidad.
And we hope you get involved with us in the community more.
La primera cosa que yo quisiera.
First, the first thing I would like to say.
Es para pedir.
Is to ask you.
Tener fondos para un grupo de apoyo.
It's asking for funds for a support group.
Para nuestra salud.
For our health.
Como prevenir el cáncer del seno.
To prevent breast cancer.
Que en la comunidad hispana no lo hay.
That within the Hispanic community there is not.
En dos años que yo tengo viviendo en esta comunidad, no he visto ese, ningún programa de esos más que en la comunidad que hablan inglés.
In two years that I have lived in here in Lodi, I haven't seen this in the Hispanic community, only in the Caucasian community.
Y para prevenir enfermedades venarias principalmente para la juventud.
And to prevent venarious illnesses in the youth.
Como dar clases, como proteger a los jóvenes.
Like giving classes to the youth, to educate youth.
Y para personas que necesitan psicólogo gratis, que no tenga que pagar, porque hay mucho personas que necesitan, niños que necesitan psicólogo, y no lo tienen en la comunidad latina.
And for people that need psychologists, for children that need psychologists, and within the Hispanic community that they don't count with psychologists.
Porque tienen problemas en su casa.
Because they have problems at home.
Y eso hace que se involucre en las pandillas.
And that makes them get involved in gangs.
Segunda cosa. Es para pedir a la ciudad, arreglar las banquetas. Estamos muy olvidados en el lado de, ¿a qué lado?
And the second point I would like to say is that, to fix sidewalks on the east side of Lodi, because we have been forgiven on this east side of Lodi.
Para poder caminar bien.
To be able to walk.
Que no pasen accidentes como el que pasé yo.
To not have accidents like the one I had.
Porque me resbalé, me yendo los botes de la basura.
Because I stepped down and taking out garbage cans.
Porque las banquetas no son como banquetas, son como barbas.
Because the sidewalks are not like a sidewalk.
En la calle.
On the street.
Y eso pertenece a la ciudad, no pertenece a...
And that pertains to the city, it doesn't pertain to me.
Por eso, por esos rumbos no se mira la barrera donde tienen que limpiar las calles. Yo siempre las miro de este lado, y de qué lado estamos olvidados.
On that side of Lodi, I never see those tracks this week, the streets. I always see them on this west side of Lodi.
Y yo estoy aquí porque tengo mi propiedad, y a mí me afecta, y yo pago estantes en mi propiedad.
And I'm here because I pay my property, and I pay taxes, and that affects my property.
Para que haya servicios de esa clase en ese lugar.
To have services like those in the city.
Pues hasta mi carro se me ha arrinado de tan alto que está el driveway.
My car has ruined because of how high the driveway is.
La tercera parte.
The third point.
Tenemos que prevenir el crimen, porque por mi calle cada semana hacen parties, flyers.
Because we also have to try to prevent crime, because where on my street I live, there's every week they have parties.
Y se involucran no nada más las personas que somos, porque siempre nos piden a nosotros como latinos que somos los que estamos en el crimen, que estamos en el, no, ahorita se están involucrando personas buenas también, porque llegan, y yo los estoy mirando la noche.
Where other people get involved, not only Latinos, because we are judged to be like the ones that always get in this kind of parties, but also Caucasians. I've seen people involved in this.
Son hasta las 2, 3 de la mañana.
It's like 2 or 3 in the morning.
Donde están todos tomados, drogados.
Where people come out drunk.
Y ponen en peligro su vida.
And they put their lives in danger.
Y tienen que hacer un lugar, un centro donde la juventud de 13, 14 años se diviertan sanamente.
And you have to create or make a center in Lodi where youth can go to have fun.
Porque eso está afectando a todo el lugar donde yo vivo.
Because that is affecting the area where I live.
Cuarta cosa.
Fourth point, the last one.
Es el parque.
It's the park.
Porque rentan tan caro el parque, porque están rentándolo, el año pasado yo tengo entendido que lo rentaron en $500 para las personas que juegan en el parque.
It's a park because I have understood that last year they were charging $500 for people that wanted to play sports to use it, and they were charging $500.
Y ellos tuvieron que usar... Y ellos tuvieron que usar un parque fuera de la ciudad para ir a jugar, si el parque es de nuestra comunidad.
And they had, this group of people had to go outside the city of Lodi to play the sports because they were not able to play here in Lodi to pay those fees.
Y no necesitan cobrar tanto, cobrar menos, para que los jóvenes se sigan involucrando en deportes, y se empiece a parar el crimen, las pandillas.
And you don't have to charge that much for youth to be involved in sports, because that would help reduce crime and gangs.
Robos, drogas.
Drugs, people stealing.
Por eso pido a nuestros alcaldes.
That's why I ask council members and mayor and city man and members.
Se involucren en la comunidad latina.
Get involved in the Latino community.
Porque yo, yo en dos años que tengo viviendo en esta comunidad.
Because two years that I have lived in here in this city.
Yo miro que el lado de a qué lado está olvidado.
Because I see that the east side is forgiven.
Y como... Y como yo estoy viviendo aquí, me moví aquí, aquí compré mi casa, entonces estoy involucrando en la comunidad.
Because I moved here, I live here, and I bought my house, that's why I'm getting involved in the community.
Quiero ayudar a mi comunidad y a mis jóvenes que necesitan mucha ayuda.
And I want to help my community and I want to help the youth that need help in this community.
That's all.
Thank you.
I have a lot to say here, so get ready to translate. Thank you. First off, I'll say, thank you so much for being here tonight, and I appreciate the fact that you want to get involved. Because I'll tell you, since 1993, I too have been looking for someone who would like to represent, if we're going to go down the separation of white and Hispanic, representing the Hispanic community. I longed for that since 1993. I too live on the east side. But I don't look at my neighbors as Caucasian, or Hispanic, or Pakistani. I look at them as my neighbors, because we're in this together. Street sweeping, I live on the corner of Elm and Garfield, one block west or east, excuse me, south of Locust Street. I'm in Gaines Central over there. And I know firsthand what it's like to have the problems that you two are experiencing. My streets, we burn kids our neighborhood every single week. And I make darn good and sure that they go down Locust Street. Huh, Mr. Sandlin?
Yes.
Let me finish. Sidewalks, we don't know there's a problem in your neighborhood unless you tell us. So thank you very much for being here, and we hope that you give your concerns to Mr. Sandlin so we can get that sidewalk fixed. If you're falling, we need to know about it, and we need you to speak up and tell us when we have these problems. There are grants for children to participate in our sporting events through the bottoms. We have 180 team center for youth. We're doing everything we can with limited funds. The biggest problem with the east side is it was ignored for years. And now it's costing twice as much money to do the repairs that need to be done. But if we can't get the community that lives on the east side involved with the process and helping the council to understand the needs that are there, then it's impossible for us to throw the amount of money, which we don't have, at the problem. But we're doing what we can. We're doing street sweeping. We're, just tonight, allocated money for alley repairs. So we're rebuilding them from the ground up, which has never been done. We're doing everything we can with the monies that we have. And I will die before I will let the east side be forgotten, and you can bank on that.
Mary, stay right here. So let's go together.
Hasta ahorita, una sola vez ha pasado la barrera por mi calle.
Until now, only one time the street has only gone through my street, only once in two years.
Great, we need to report that to Mr. Sandlin and get on that, okay?
Mary, stay, stay here. I want to make, I want to make a comment myself here. The comment that we're not paying attention to the east side, you know, we're spending a lot of time there, let me tell you some of the things, all right? We have a swimming pool there. Jeff, could you tell us about swimming pools? We're trying to make the swimming pool open so that we can have costs free. You know, I'm talking about. Give that, and I'm going to ask Senator Mary to give you some of the things we're doing for you. And I'm going to ask you to do something, too.
So the program, which I think we have fully funded this year, is free swim at Blakely Park on the weekends during the course of the summer. We found very clearly that price is the inhibitor for the neighborhood. We've had a variety of nonprofits and foundations step up, and I think the entire summer season will be funded by those organizations.
We also have churches and organizations, both east side painted during that. The other thing that we have, we're supporting Boys Club and Salvation Army and programs. We do have after-school programs, we do have this. But I do ask you, Mary, one thing. You know what I'd like for you to do? Get Neighborhood Watch. You know what Neighborhood Watch is? Form about two or three in the east side. Every August, you get together with your neighbors, and then you have the public and police officers will come to visit you. That makes the streets safe. If you could do that, I'm asking you maybe get another family, a block. And to get this information, Francisco? Why don't you get about three or four Neighborhood Watches this year? I'm trying to support that, I'm really trying to support that. If you can do that, that would help us a lot. I'm going to talk to the sidewalks, too. This complaint about sidewalks is perennial. I'm saying, someone walked and said, "There's a sidewalk on Cherokee." And I said, "Rat, what can we do about it?" And Rat, what was your answer to me?
Well, we have a variety of sidewalk issues. I think the ladies' issue may be one of just condition of the sidewalk as opposed to no sidewalk, which is the case on Cherokee Lane in many blocks where sidewalks have never been built. They weren't built when they were annexed in the city. But conditions of sidewalks are something that we spend a lot of money on. In fact, this block rent program will spend even more money repairing sidewalks, predominantly on the east side of the city. And in the course of the history of the block rent program, I want to say, in excess of four or five million dollars of sidewalk improvements have been made. So, I mean, almost annually, this council dedicates funds specifically to sidewalks, and again, for the most part, of the east side.
Thank you. You heard, and Mr. Wood, I'd like to, there is about seven people here. Next year, when they apply, I think we should give them, tell them something, servicemen, if that's possible.
The first issue is they have to apply. There is not a program the council can allocate a fund to today, tonight, because there isn't a program that has been brought forward for your consideration.
Thank you.
If I could add very briefly, as I mentioned previously, we are going through, we are finishing our, going into our fifth year as an entitlement. When we started this, we did a five-year consolidated plan. So this coming year, one of our tasks is to start the next five-year plan, the next consolidated plan for... And part of that is doing outreach into the community and getting input like this. So I will go through Mr. Trujillo and other organizations out there that can provide us with access to the community. Quite frankly, when we went through this five years ago, even with the community partnerships assistance, very limited response. So it's this type of feedback, this type of response and involvement that we really need from the community in order to help outline whatever goals we want to establish for block rent funding for the next five years.
Thank you. Do you identify my question?
And that's basically the opportunity that we're looking for. You know, just to be involved in the process. As much as I want to get funding for my organization, I want the funding to support families' basic needs, regardless of who the agency is going to be receiving the funding.
Irina Velasco? Irina?
Buenas noches.
Good afternoon.
Respectables consejeros.
Respected council members.
Of Lodi.
Of Lodi.
Mayor.
And mayor.
Of Lodi, mi nombre es.
My name is.
Irene Velasco.
Irene Velasco.
Vivo en Lodi.
I live here in Lodi.
Como miembro del comité.
As a member of the committee.
Organizador de Lodi.
Community, organizing committee.
Estamos preocupados.
We are worried.
Por la distribución de los fondos. Y respetablemente es de una manera.
And I'm worried about funds distribution. Respectfully, it is an erroneous way.
Les pido, por favor.
I please ask you.
Una recomendación.
I please ask you to reconsider.
De fondos.
Of the allocation of funds.
Para suplir, para compensar las necesidades.
To supply basic needs.
Necesidades básicas de las familias.
To supply basic family needs.
Viviendas.
Like housing.
Comida.
Food.
Asistencia para pagar los billos. En tiempos difíciles.
Assistance on paying bills on hard times.
Enfrentamos que.
We understand that.
Quieren dar.
That you want to give funds.
Fondos para estilizar gatos y perros.
That you want to give funds to sterilize cats and dogs.
Y programas de grafitis.
And the graffiti program.
Pero no hay, no hay cuando. No cuando.
But now when you.
Tenemos, cuando tenemos familias, cuales necesidades básicas no han sido cubiertas.
But now when you have families of which basic needs have not been covered.
Gracias por su atención y espero reconoción su atención.
Thank you for your attention, and I hope you reconsider your decision.
Thank you.
And thank you so much. Chanel Brady? Chanel Brady?
Good evening, city council members and mayor. My name is Chanel Brady, and I work for the Community Partnership for Families at the Lodi Family Resource Center.
Could you pull the microphone a little closer, please, ma'am?
And I'm a member of the local organizing committee. I have come here tonight to talk about the importance of families within our community. Families that come into the Lodi Family Resource Center are in need of resources and support for things like food utilities, housing, and transportation. It is very hard to try and help these families in their time of need when there are limited resources in Lodi to give them. There was a family that came into the center needing help to pay her city of Lodi bill. She was unemployed and waiting to receive her first unemployment check. Her electric was going to be shut off in three days if she didn't come up with almost four hundred dollars. I referred her to the Salvation Army for assistance so they could only pay a certain portion of it. I was not able to help with the whole thing. So then her electric was shut off, and it made it more difficult to get her electric back on. I am asking that in the future, some CDPT funds be allocated to help with families' basic needs. Also that you see them as stakeholders and make them a part of the decision-making process when it comes to allocating funds.
Thank you so much. Cisco, you're the last person you spoke. Is there any other citizens in my constituency?
Good evening again. I'm Doug Chaney. I'm one of the board members of Hand Up here in Lodi. We're the homeless outreach group. And I'm also a member of the Lodi Organizing Committee. And I want to express my same concerns about the twenty thousand dollars for the spay and neuter and the forty-two thousand for graffiti. It seems to me like LPD and public works already have a pretty bloated budget. And I don't understand why they need more funds like that to fulfill something that they should be taking care of themselves or the residents themselves should be participating a little bit more if they want to own an animal. I never see anything, you know, any emphasis in the paper anywhere or from animal control urging people to take their pets. And I see there are plenty of low-cost spay-neuter clinics that are here in Lodi. I don't know, it seems like, they used to be here every two weeks in Rayleigh's parking lot. And I think that's just absurd. You're worried about animals running loose and overtaking the city, but how about the gangbangers? You don't worry about them overtaking the city? They are too. You have people here in Lodi that are hungry. They can't put food on their own table, they don't have a job. The economy here is bad. You got Lodi Electric, you got an infinite source of funds at Lodi Electric. We've got the highest electric rates in the nation, or one of the top, the residential rates. You've got plenty of money that you siphon from there. I look at your agendas and meeting minutes every week, and I see all that billions of dollars coming from Lodi Electric every weekend in the general fund. And I just can't understand why the city of Lodi itself can't be more helpful rather than depending on all the nonprofits and everyone else to do their work for them. People on the east side suffer, go over there. Got to climb the Berlin Wall first, there's no communication over there whatsoever. And it... I was at a meeting with John Moore when he was Health Service Director for San Martin County. And I believe there's a, the city gets like a twenty-five percent administrative fee for expensing these funds. Where does that money go? Twenty-five percent, six fifty is quite a chunk of money. I don't know. You always cry broke, but I know you got money, there's money, the money in Lodi Utility Electric Fund. They've got the most money there in their surplus fund than they've ever had. Our rates keep going up. The business rates keep going down. Our residents subsidizing the businesses here in town, too. I just don't understand why Lodi keeps crying broke. I think the small nonprofits here that work right in the trenches deserve a little bit more than the, you know? You look at the fund allocations, the same people every year. I never see any small groups in there, local nonprofit groups. And I'd just like to know why. I guess that's really all I have. I'm still disappointed that there's so much money allocated to already city departments for funding and nothing for human services. So that's basically what I have to say. And hopefully, this will be just a first of many meetings to express all of us citizens' thoughts that are kind of like... I've actually heard some of the people refer to the Latinos and minorities as second-class citizens. So we need to change that, and it's time for the city of Lodi to step up and do their part. You're unfortunately invited to join our organizing group, too, Ms. Mouse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much. Doug, Ms. Chaney, that's to be precise for the reason I had three town hall meetings. Last one in March, you could ask those questions. I invite you to ask those questions, because you want to enroll your statements that's out there. And what I wanted to clarify, in June, we're going to have a town hall meeting on police crime in November, September, on Electric Safety. All thoughts, it is the highest. Before you do that, write me the questions, I have the answers. Thank you. And Ms. Mouse.
Thank you. Dan Clark, and we also make arrangements with the League of California Cities to have translation, the headphone sets, so that anyone can participate and not have to have a translator. All right, thank you.
Is any of the comments public?
My name's Bob Wetzel. Night twenty-five, Lake Home Drive. Whoops. And welcome, colleagues, to my little speech here. You know, what we're seeing here is popping on the east side. It's pretty serious over there. And I think a lot of people not aware of what's happening. And I think a lot of people are not aware of what's happening. Now, on this last grant, the $350,000, just some of the highlights we got here, and I get on the east side a lot and I do ask questions. I found a lot when I was campaigning for the mayor. I took 100 pamphlets, how to do things in Spanish, to teach these people what the problems were and what they need over there. So, what I see here is that we got this great team called GRAPE, Program School Resource Officers. Terrific. I think I was one of the original officers that got involved in, a school officer. I learned that from Stockton PD and Ridgeway Open PD. I learned that from them. It says here, "All gang programs in school contact at risk." Project Learn by Boys and Girls Club, after school tutoring, monitoring, youth outreach workers, home visits. Apparently, these people aren't getting a word. They're not getting this information. There's a hell of a lot of money going down the tubes on it. I'll go one step further here. We've got 80 saturation patrol missions in the target area. 80. That's a hell of a lot of patrol status. I went, the last gang meeting I went to, and I, the chief was here and I asked a couple of questions. I asked two officers, "How many knives have you collected while you work in east side gang units? How many water millet knives you get? How many stab blade knives you get? How many grab blade knives you get?" I heard they were going to have palpable cause. You don't need palpable cause. You get the trust of these people, you get the knives. That's the way it is. I know men Oakland, I'll tell you what they do for an experience. They take the knives and they rip the damn blade off. And they take it, take the handle back to your dad because soon as he comes and complains about destroying your property, we're going to get them for not taking care of you. I'm getting a little excited about this. Now, I asked Mr. Bartman here the other day because we don't have time to talk, that I wanted to see a station at the central part where the gang problems are. That would be the Tuck Cave and Central. And over by the grocery store here not too long ago, one guy is selling some kind of drug, the other guy's mad on the other corner because that's his territory. Not much I can do about that, but that's what I'm observing, there's a little happiness there. So, on that point of view, I says to Mr. Bartman, "We have to get someplace that has central location open 24 hours a day and somebody with authority's got to be in there." And I said, "Hell, I'll man the damn station myself." But once that's open, they got a place to go. A place to go. Just like you tell your man on the street. When a man on the street gets you by the cuff, it's an officer and you turn him down, he can't go off the ladder of authority to get something done. That's what the little place over there would be. The doors open, kids will walk in or inquisitive. Quick reports will come out or kids say, "It's not a bad deal. Look at your resource officer. When he first started, hell, he's a snitch. We tell him what he wants to know, he goes to PD and tells them what we want to know. You got to get the trust for it." I'm really concerned about that. Now, I don't know what else they, there was a lot of traffic problems over DMV, for example. They were writing so many tickets over there before they moved. They looked like butterflies on the overpass. I made a contact with somebody about that. I ended up going to get a vehicle code, making 50 copies and passing them out to people over there. Bad PR. Bad PR. I think it was a $28 ticket. So, I head back to the east side. You've got to have something, these people, old people, young people, when they notice that, they're going to walk in there. Now, we got this great system of our partners. I did a lot of book on the partners. When I was working, how to get, how to get extra salary to have them, the PD is gifted to have those people, sharp people, good people. If you want something done, call them, don't call the PD. Because they'll get right on it. That's the way it is. I've experienced that. But anyhow, maybe I should be calm about this, but I'm not. I put too many years in and I'm really disappointed the east side's going to help. And I can give you some names of three important people in Mexican community. They're the congress. You go to Comcast, Comstat, listen to them. Three great Mexican-American groups out there with intelligent people are telling the people in that capital up there, they want some representation.
So, put your talking in, I can't hear you. How can you?
I thought I talked enough. But anyways, it says here, "Project Learn by Boys and Girls..." "And the Boys and Girls Club, after school tutoring, homework assistance." Homework assistance. After school tutoring. Does anybody know about that?
Yeah.
Then we're having, people here don't know too much about what's going on. I don't understand that. It just seems like they're going to get, now they're still about having what you call a group, let's say we're going to decide to have a committee over here. That will probably work. But I still think the way you get it, you have to have an open building over there 24 hours a day with people to have authority to say, "Come in here, we'll talk to you. We'll listen to you. We'll see you again." Be the communications. I do know this, when they shut the DA staff down here, I went down there to open the DA staff call ball chip for free. I'll be a go man. I'll do the phone call. People will come in, they won't be disappointed. I'll see that they got their contacts, they go down there, they won't waste their time. They wouldn't want to do that. In fact, Mr. Wood knows, I volunteered to work for the Delodi PD to work the expression detail out what I like. Give me a night shift, I'm ready to go to work. Hell, I'll do that. All you told me I was too late to apply. Anyway, that's that night part. And I think that I can't cover it all because there's so much detail here and that I just want to let you know that what they're saying here, I hear them. So, we have to notice. I don't think the PD can anticipate what they're already doing already, they're overloaded, but the partners are just as great. I kept looking here a while back with my old street statistics I've had. God, thank you, so much work. PD lucky to have them. So, I think we can spare some time to open an office on the east side and see what we can do about that. I really like to see that now.
He's listening.
Mr. Mayor and city council members, Dale Gillespie, 1420 South Mills, Suite M, Delodi. I'm here tonight just to ask for your support for a capital improvement, slides changed, capital improvement project for Lowell, Center Gardens. I'm a board member there and kind of heading up that project. And I also have Matt Dickerson, our board chair. He's the operations manager at General Mills. We're happy to have Matt on our board. And let's see, I think I've seen all the other board members, but at any rate, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but otherwise, I ask for your support. Thank you.
Bring you back to city council?
Thank you.
Well, this was a public hearing. You got the next step up there, which is to draft the annual action plan. I've got the council communication in front of me. So, you need a motion to approve the draft action plan, is that correct?
There is a resolution approving the resolution that calls out the various allocation amounts for the draft action plan.
You know, I think it is good to follow up on this. Mr. Wood, you're pointing out that it's time to put together the next five-year plan. You need public input. Francisco, you say you're willing to do that. And, you know, we've heard a lot of different comments tonight. I would have a hard time letting the graffiti go. I just, I would. I think, you know, understanding the mindset, seeing how out of control it is in the city of Stockton and the level of gang violence, you know, maybe people aren't going to, you know, believe in the nexus to that, but I, my theory is, we let that go and then all of a sudden, you know, we see an increase in gang violence and then people are up here, "What are you doing about it? Why aren't you dealing with this? Why don't you have strategies that, you know, prevent that from happening?" So, again, I think it's good that you can meet with Mr. Wood and get that process started. And I'm going to make a motion that we approve the 2013-14 action plan for the community development block grant program as outlined by Mr. Wood.
Question, Ms. Melas?
Thank you, yes, please, move to discussion. I think that the community block grant funding is... My interpretation of what this funds was, its original purpose was to reinvest back into the infrastructure of the most challenged part of our community. It wasn't necessarily designed to give money to nonprofits. It was designed to take care of facilities, sidewalks, parks. That's what the money was designed for. So, during your meetings, I would like the original intention of community block grant funding to be communicated because somehow it's morphed into, we're now considering paying for healthcare for people. That is not what this funding was originally designed for, nor was it given to us by the federal government for that purpose. There are other programs that take care of those types of services. We are in the business of making sure the infrastructure and the housing is good and that's what we've been trying to do with this money. We're getting away from funding nonprofits and getting back to the original intent, which is why the split is 60/40. 60 to go to city projects so that we can take care of sidewalks and alleyways and things the city doesn't have any money for. And to make sure that we've got the funding to operate the city in a manner which is most conducive for the aging parts of town, not necessarily providing food or housing or medical care for those people who live in the target area. So, I think during your conversations, I think it's very important to communicate the original intent of community block grant funding from the federal standpoint because quite frankly, local government should not be in the business of allocating money to nonprofit agencies. And I've said this for years, not to say that your needs and your desires for food, medical, and housing isn't valid. I just think it's the wrong pot of money to be going after. And we need to be using it so that you have safe streets and have good sidewalks, have decent housing, and things that cities are responsible for. And I think that the line is being crossed here and I don't want it to get crossed so far that we lose the intent of the federal government's desire for this money. So, I just want that to be on record. Thank you.
Thank you. The fact that we allocate 60% for city projects, 40% for community-based projects demonstrates that it's within the parameters of this program. There's no, nobody's playing games here. There's no stretching of the interpretation. These funds allow those allocations and I completely disagree that we should totally get into city projects and not be able to find ways to assist some of what I think are serious needs and concerns in this community for help as has been stated, you know, many times tonight. So, what we've done about money that's been allocated for helping people that are hungry through the food banks, helping people find, you know, some assistance in dealing with fair housing and dealing with replacement of windows, those are all within the guidelines of this program. And I will continue to support that 60/40 split. I would never, ever vote for 100% of it to go strictly to sidewalks and alleys and capital
Any comments from the city council? My comment is this, next year, apply and let's see what the process, build the process is discussed. I think you spend time here, we've heard you, it's impossible, we've heard you. Also, I encourage you to work on the east side and I also encourage you to have a lot of neighborhood watch. Could you work on that, Francisco? Because we're trying to keep our city streets safe. I have people who are there who are not Hispanics. They're concerned. They're concerned, I've met with them and so forth. They're willing to have neighborhood watches and so, that's important, have neighbors get close together and work with you. Paul Coffey question? On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. That closes the House of Care for G1.
Can we take a final break?
Michelle?